As Mayor, I hereby call to order this special meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for June 11th, 2018 at this hour. And the sole purpose of this special meeting tonight is to hear a department presentation from Parks, Recreation and Facilities. And we'd start the meeting by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney, Counselor Bowns.
Here.
Counselor Littman, Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Here.
Counselor Hollinsburg.
Here.
Mayor Engler.
Here.
Wow. That was five years.
Was it?
That was five years, the first time I've been on this council that that happened.
That's the first time ever.
I'm like, oh, I slipped up.
This is memorable.
I think I screwed it up last time. So let the record show that we have four counselors present at the beginning of the meeting tonight. I'm also expecting Counselor Cheney to arrive. Counselor Hamel is traveling today and will not be here. Counselor Littman is traveling today and will not be present. So we are to department presentations and we welcome Mr. Dunleavy.
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Dunleavy, Director of Recreation and Facilities, here tonight to present the Parks and Recreation and Facilities 2018-2019 budget. And I thought I'd start by just giving a real brief summary of the department responsibilities for some of the new faces here on the council. The Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for maintaining fifteen parks of various sizes, five beaches and bathhouses, nine cemeteries, City Hall, Laconia Police Station, the two libraries, Laconia Community Center, three parkhouses, and the Weers Community Center. We also maintain many additional public spaces and areas along right-ofways, traffic islands, other obscure places. We also are responsible for maintaining several ornamental planting areas throughout the city. We provide significant support in field preparations for the school department athletics. We do field preparations for the Winnipeg hockey muskrats. We maintain the WOW Trail and the Downtown Riverwalk. We provide and provide maintenance support for the Laconia Fire Department. There are also various types of recreational programming that we are responsible for, including the Opichi Day Camp, which is a ten-week program in the summer. Gym activities at the community center like pickleball, basketball, open gym for students, jazzercise, to name a few. We also provide various facilities for youth sports, like the community center gym and all the athletic fields throughout the city. And we also offer seasonal recreational programming around the holidays, hayrides for Pumpkin Festival, and we play a large role in the planning and organization of the Fourth of July celebration at Opichi Park. So I'd like to start by directing you to page 110 of your budget booklet. And my budget's broken up into a couple of different categories. I'll just summarize those real quick. The first being the Recreation and Facilities budget, which is really the core Parks and Recreation budget. The City Hall Building Maintenance Budget. The Laconia Community Center Building Maintenance Budget. The Laconia Police Station Building Maintenance Budget. And then finally, I'll be reviewing the capital improvement projects that we're requesting for the next fiscal year. So if I can direct your attention to the top of page 110, under the category salaries. The line item for salaries is the line item that encompasses the eight full-time, year-round employees for the city. The following category, temporary, is for temporary staff, which would include lifeguards, seasonal maintenance, any seasonal positions of that category. The salaries item is showing, is requesting an increase of $19,000. That is dictated by the collective bargaining agreement or performance increases as dictated in the compensation program for the city. The temporary salaries item, I am requesting a level funding for that. Again, that's for lifeguards, seasonal maintenance, gym attendance, parking lot attendance. The manager has reduced that by $5,000. And I'm certainly comfortable with what the city manager's proposing. I will say, one thing that we've done as a recent change is with the introduction of the parking kiosks. We've kind of restructured the Weers Beach parking lot attendant position so that it's more of a enforcement or park ranger kind of responsibility. And we've been able to reduce staffing as a result. So really, the collection of parking fees at Weers Beach no longer has to happen with the kiosks, but we feel it's important to have a presence there for, to help people with kiosks, be kind of ambassadors for the city, but also enforce the parking along Lakeside Ave and at the beach. Yes?
Kevin, the enforcement part of that, they can't issue a summons, correct?
They can, write tickets.
Okay.
So they have, yes. We have tablets for them, so they can basically see every parking space, see when they expire. It's all automated, so they do handwritten tickets. And that'll be in addition to the police department doing enforcement and also the summer help that the police department brings on.
Where the tickets come from? Is it electronic ticket?
It's a written ticket, but we get those from the police department.
Okay.
And it's tracked and submitted each day, and so there is monitoring of that.
Okay.
But to summarize, there is some cost savings that we're seeing for, we don't have to staff that beach at a level that we had to in the past because of the kiosks. The third item down on salaries is overtime, and I'm requesting a $1,000 increase in that item due to just past expenses, but also we're seeing with a shortage of seasonal help available to us, we are at times needing to cover other responsibilities with some overtime. But a $1,000 increase is what I'm requesting for that. So that's all I have for the salaries item. I'd like to move on to the other category below that. And I'm not going to go line by line here. There are some nominal increases and decreases, nothing significant. If there's certainly something there that somebody wants to ask about, I can talk about that, but there's just a couple here I just want to review. Under printing, which is the sixth one down, asking for a $1,000 increase, and that's for park signage, just to make, you'll see the big park signs. We have some that are in disrepair, and we like to keep up with rotating those, getting replaced a handful every year, and we're finding the cost of that is increasing. Other items that I'm looking to increase are the maintenance buildings item and the maintenance parkhouse item, $1,000 each. And that's just any routine maintenance that occur that my staff performs, whether it's a repair of window, fix an outlet, repair stairs. Those are, that would be covered, those items. And that's, the increase for that is based on traditional costs that we're seeing and also obviously material costs increase as time goes on. And the last item I'd just like to highlight is the outside contracts, which is third from the bottom. And that item is for any electrical plumbing or tree contractors that we need to have come in, and I'm requesting a $2,000 increase on that line item. And that'll be easily spent. That'll, $2,000 gives me about one big tree cut down a year, and we have a lot of trees that need attention, so that'll help us get a little bit closer.
You refresh our memories as to why that was $18,000 in fiscal '17?
Yeah, that's a good question. There's probably one or two items that would have kicked that over, and I don't remember. I can get the answer for you, I don't have it tonight, but I can certainly do that.
Do you want me to go look? Do you want me to go look and see what it is?
No, I was just curious.
My guess, it was one or two items, and if I thought about it, I'd probably come up with it. And so overall, the, for this portion of my budget, I'm looking at requesting a $23,523 increase, with about $19,000 of that being for the salary line item alone. So that's pretty much what I have for the Recreation and Facilities budget.
Any questions about Recreation and Facilities, Counselor Hamel?
Kevin, the rent, vehicle rental down at the bottom, the third one up.
Right.
$35,000. What do you rent for that? What equipment?
That is actually for rent, that's the use of the city vehicles. It's kind of an internal rental of, we basically rent our own vehicles.
Okay, because I looked at the explanation of it, and it was kind of brief.
Oh, okay, right, right.
The mechanics take care of all the vehicles, all the tractors, all the leaf blowers, all the, you know, chainsaws, anything like that, or any repairs, routine maintenance are all done.
So that's the sum that Parks and Recs puts back into internal service.
Yeah, that's the internal service fund that goes back into it, yep.
Right.
Is the temporary help on payroll, or are they treated as contract?
No, they're on payroll, yes.
Does the, does the schools still participate in helping out with fertilizer and things like that? I know they did it for maybe three years.
Right.
They gave $5,000.
Correct.
To help you guys out for the fuels they use.
Right. We have not seen anything probably in the past two years, I'm thinking, maybe three years. So we have not, to answer your question.
Okay, so you'd still, you'd still do babotas field?
Correct.
Fertilizer?
Correct.
And how about the lower field? I know you mow it.
We do, and we will fertilize that as well. Not as much so as babotas, but we do, we do have some maintenance.
So both those fields are, well, I can't say pretty, yeah, they're pretty much used by the high school, right?
Predominantly.
Babotas probably used by the little kids and stuff.
Youth lacrosse uses babotas.
Most of the time, it's the high school.
Yeah. I will say babotas is a city park, although it's, a lot of people think of it as being a part of the high school facility and school. It's actually, there is a separate property there that's, that is city parkland.
So they stopped that last year, you think?
I want to say it's been two years, maybe.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Counselor Haynes has a question.
Kevin, where do we stand as far as lifeguards are concerned?
We are at, as of today, we have six lifeguards. We need thirteen to man, we've been manning Weers Beach, Bond Beach, and Opichi Point the past, I want to say, six or seven years. We have not manned Bartlett and Opichi Cove for, again, probably six or seven years. With six lifeguards, that leaves us enough lifeguards to man Weers Beach, essentially. We have to have four there on a day, you know, every, any given day, and we can't have them working, obviously you have to have days off, so that's the situation. I think one of the lifeguards can only work intermittently as well, so we're really in a tough position. We also have no lifeguards that are interested in being certified to teach swim lessons, so we're at a point where we aren't able to teach swim lessons. So we'd have to cancel this program. We have canceled the program because I think it's just too late to move forward with it, and we'd have to have swim lessons at Weers Beach.
Is it a shortage of talent, or is it what we pay?
I feel like it's not pay. Other communities are having the same difficulty. Some communities that pay even more than we do are still having trouble. I just think it's a lack of a labor force. I just don't think there's interest in that, interest in people that want a lifeguard. I think, and I'm not so sure it's they're finding other jobs. I think it's just there's a shortage of people that want to do that. We're having similar issues with our maintenance, our maintenance department.
That was my next question.
Yeah, yeah. But what I've been able to do with the maintenance department is advertise for part-time help, and I've been able to tap into a demographic where people that are willing to work part-time, so I've been able to tap into that demographic, and it's been helpful for that. But we're still short on maintenance, but not as bad as lifeguards.
I'm just concerned, you know, we're the city on the lakes, and we can't even staff our beaches.
I agree, I agree, and it's not unique to us. Guilford's had problems, Meredith, Manchester, Concord, all have had issues with, you know, and I, you know, and we could talk about increasing rates of pay, per hourly rate. I just don't get, I mean, Public Works has advertised for a position $14 an hour for a maintenance, seasonal maintenance, and they had trouble getting applicants. So I'm just not convinced that the pay is the issue.
Have we, have we ever given any thought to, in recent years, to closing Cove, the Opichi Cove beach?
Closing it permanently?
Yeah.
I haven't given much thought to doing.
Ever been discussed?
No.
I mean, there's another beach 100 yards away.
Correct, and I think that.
And that one is always a problem with contamination.
Right, and some of that's been our, the Canada Goose problem that we've had there, wasn't as much of an issue last year. Again, it's also the, I think the topography of that beach is.
Yeah, there's no flow, natural flow through there.
Right, and there's some street runoff that drains right into that area, some major street runoff. So it's certainly something we could investigate. I mean, to have two beaches in one facility, is it, is that something that's really necessary? That might be something we want to consider.
I would, I would encourage you to at least look at it, and I may be the only one in the city.
Right.
But I've often wondered why we maintain that beach.
Right.
Given, given the trouble we've had with it.
Right.
And how often it's actually open and.
Right. And what we're, we're probably going to do, and what we did most of the year last year is post it as an advise, under advisory for bacteria all the time, because in order to test it daily, we just don't have the funding to, the tests are expensive, and for us to keep testing, keep testing for a window of opportunity for it to show up clear, probably isn't good use of money. I would say that people still use the beach, they sunbathe, but as far as swimming, maybe that's something we should look to consider.
There's plenty of sunbathing room right out on the other side of the Little League Field.
True, true, right.
Counselor Hamel?
I think the theory of that, of the cove, was that that was for the little kids, because it's more of a gradual walk out.
Right.
And the point, you go a little ways and it drops off.
It is deeper, yes, yes.
So I think that was always the, I mean, when I grew up, that's where the little kids swam. I mean, whether you had algae coming from your head or not, it just, we swam there, so, but.
That explains a lot.
You don't know what I went through as a young kid, so, but that was always the, you know, I mean, they used to have rafts out there.
Right.
And all kinds of stuff.
Well, just when you look at it.
It was a great place.
You know, without emotion, it just seems like a, a lot of reasons why it's a bad place for a beach.
And I've had a lot of people say to me, geez, how come, how come this beach is, it never used to be a problem when I was a kid? And I tell them, it's because they didn't test the water, you didn't know about it.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
So, yeah, it's.
I want to put this right, did we have the goose program this year?
We were prepared to have them come.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, prepared to have them come and.
Last year, we were prepared, and word got out through the goose network, and they didn't show up last year.
Gotcha. And we, we've seen a couple, but we have somebody on standby to help us out if we need to try to address the problem.
How about at the Weers?
Weers I haven't, hasn't, and that's not, that's not as much of a problem, but I think the problem, I've seen less, less of their presence.
So they're flying higher over instead of landing?
Or found another place to be, yes.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Anything else before I move, okay? The next page, page 111 is just a summary of this, essentially a breakdown of the salaries item from the previous page. These would be for the full-time, year-round employees of the department. Okay, so I'll move on to the City Hall Building Maintenance Budget, which is on page 115. And there's really just a couple items here to touch on with some minor adjustments. I'd like to highlight the first item, Lights and Power. I'm requesting an additional $1,000 for the lights and power, and that's based on historic use. And then also the third item, Fuel, which is natural gas. I'm requesting a reduced amount from $14,000 to $10,000. That, again, is based on historical use. We also have new windows, which we have, will, should have a good impact. Not sure how to quantify that, but with new windows, I expect our fuel bill will be less because of that. So the overall City Hall Maintenance Budget, I'm looking at requesting a reduction of $3,000 overall.
Any questions on City Hall Maintenance?
Okay, I'll move on to the page 117, Community Center Building Maintenance. And really, everything's level funded with the exception of fuel, and I'm showing a reduction, requesting a reduction of thirty, sorry, $3,500 for that individual line item. And also a reduction of $1,000 in the lights and power, and those are just based on historical costs. So the total request for this budget will be, my request is $2,500 less. This, this building's heated by fuel oil, which we've had some pretty good pricing the past couple of years.
Any questions about the rec center?
Okay, next item is the Police Station Building Maintenance. We're looking at, I'll start with the Lights and Power item. I'm requesting a $3,000 increase in that line item due to historical, historical costs. Item under Fuel, I'm requesting a $2,000 increase, based on, again, historical costs. And then Outside Contracts, I'm requesting a $3,000 increase, and that is based on speculated HVAC repairs, and also there's a janitorial contract component of that, which has an increase built into the multi-year contract that we have for janitorial services. So this is looking at a total increase of $8,500 for this. I will say that the, this item, I think, needs some attention, and I think we need to look and work with the police department on ways to try to reduce some of these costs. A lot of them are the utility billing, and I don't know the answers necessarily. I mean, some of it's, some of it's based on what the rates that they're paying for, that's, that building's heated with natural gas. But I think maybe there's some things that we could do to try, try to help cut the cost down, whether it's, look at the thermostats and some behavioral things maybe, or occupancy things that we could look at. But certainly, I think the increases that this building seem to be projecting at a steeper curve than some of the other facilities that we have, and I don't have all the answers.
That was the one a few years ago, if you recall, we had some issues in the community room and the mold and that type of stuff.
Humidity.
So the solution kind of is, you need to dehumidify and then you heat, and it's almost like, you know, one's pulling the other type of thing, similar to what they do in the library, where you need to control the humidity levels for the book pages. So it just seems, and sometimes, you know, the police station not being a brand-new building, but these newer buildings, somehow there's some more challenges to them than some of the old buildings.
And it's sealed too much.
So that was what drove it.
That's the thing, they can't open the windows.
That was what drove it, if you had, can't open the windows and different things. So it's driving some of it, but, you know, with the mold issue and the air quality issue, we did have to replace carpet over there, or at least.
Yeah, there'll be some, yeah, we have had, but we, yeah.
So.
And the other, the other thing we're going to look at is some of the spaces, like the dispatch center, has its own individual, like a split unit, like a Mitsubishi split unit, which is kind of individually cools, so, because that's occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Those units are starting to get older, and there may be some efficiency with some newer models. I think the server room is another one down there that also has one of those. It's a separate unit, just so you're not utilizing the air conditioning for the whole building, for those spaces that need full-time climate control. So I, you know, we're going to be considering and looking at other options to maybe try to reduce some of these costs.
Counselor Hamel?
Kev, when's the last time that building may have had an electrical audit survey of the power usage, the lighting fixtures, that kind of?
Well, I know we did a, when we did our smart, what was it called? We did, we had, we worked with what was EverSource at the time, and they did a building audit, and they upgraded many of the fixtures to LED. So we did go through and utilize that program. So that was going back three or four years ago now.
Probably four or five. We changed some of the ballast over to T9 ballast, or something that are more efficient.
Yeah, I was going to ask if that was, yeah.
We, there are programs through PS and H EverSource that come in and do these audits, and then a lot of times you can, you know, do your payments in energy savings, so it's not an actual outlay of money, but you're paying for it. It's a performance contract is what it boils down to on it. So we did them in the buildings a few years ago, but.
So, because the last couple of years, especially in the last year and a half, they've come out with LED tube fixtures to replace these. And, I mean, they're a little, little costly, but super efficient.
Right, right.
You know, and they use zero power.
Yeah, the upfront costs are high, but.
Yeah, but they actually have the replacement fluorescent tubes now in LED. Also, you mentioned, mentioning the Mitsubishi units. Those are pretty good. I mean, if they're, they're going to last till they break.
Right.
As far as if their efficiency's going down, that could be that they need to be recharged or leaking a system, but otherwise, I don't think you need to replace them until they go.
And we, and we haven't seen that need, but it, I mean, that building's coming on, what, 20 years old now, believe it or not, so.
Do they, do they have the motion detent, motion detector switches when you walk in a room, goes on and goes off when you leave?
Yes, yeah, yes. We did that with that Smart Start program with EverSource. I, you know, I, those build, those rooms that, it made sense to put them in, I should say.
Yeah, well, the dispatch area, I mean, that's a lot of heat and air anyway from all the equipment, so.
Right, right, yeah. But I think it's, we're just seeing a trend, and, you know, we haven't been able to put our finger on any specific thing, but.
For some reason, that building, ever since it's been built, it's been an energy hog. It's just, it's an expensive building to run.
Right, right. Okay, any questions on that one?
And that's been plus or minus 15 years, almost on the money. I think 2003, off a year. That's not an ancient building.
Not anymore. In fact, we're finding now a lot of the heat valves are starting to go, you know, they're reaching the end of their life, you know, they're getting to be that age where, so we're starting to see some costs with that, but that's not, that's not unusual for a building that age to start to see those, some of those valves start to go.
$3 million is what we paid for that building, so.
But was the.
I don't know what that would be the modern equivalent of it, but I remember it was $3 million because they had a hard time, that's what the city council allocated for the project, and they had a hard time squeezing everything under. I always wondered whether they cut corners at the last minute to get it under $3 million, but that was, that's what they, that was what the budget was. Whereas the library, which was two or three years later, the library board just kept coming up with more money as they ran, had issues like that. The city said, we're going to give you 1.2 million, I think it was, and I think the eventual project ended up being closer to three. But the difference was made up through fundraising and, and taking money out of their trust funds, I think, to pay for the difference, but whereas opposed to the police station project, it was like, we have to get this in under $3 million.
So that's all I have for the budget items. The last remaining item would be the capital improvement project requests for the next fiscal year, and I can direct you to page 11 of your booklet. And I'll start right on the right-hand column under Capital Outlay, right at the top here. I don't know if that means anything, but the, and I'll just go through these items individually and quickly. First item is for, requested for playground revitalization in the amount of $15,000, and that's been kind of a repetitive request that I've made in order to keep our playground systems in good condition. That really covers the cost of repairs, or the playground mulching material that we need to put down, any, any equipment that, and we need repairs every year. Uh, any, any equipment that, and we need repairs, uh, every year, uh, just to keep up with, uh, the equipment, the wear that it goes through. We have vandalism sometimes that we have to re- replace components of these, uh, these playground systems. And they, they certainly are expensive, but, uh, I think we're fortunate that we have a great playground system in the city. Uh, and it makes sense to try to reinvest it, uh, reinvest in that and keep it going. Uh, and we've been able to do that with, uh, with support of the council. So, that's just a repetitive request that I'd, I'm hoping we can do.
And we, we did, uh, I did bring a recommendation to you to use the Parks Impact Fees, which was, we used some for the Levitt Park Corp. I believe there's about six or seven thousand dollars remaining there. That was a recommendation to move over and, um, help fund that line item. And that could be done anytime, those funds are sitting there today.
The next item is the Bond Beach and Bartlett Beach Drainage Improvements. Uh, the council, uh, last year funded, uh, the, uh, engineering for improvements. And this is for erosion and drainage improvements at these two beaches specifically. This request in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, is for the actual implementation of those, uh, designed improvements. And, uh, you know, I have combined it and broken it down to two, two beaches here, sixty thousand dollars more or less each beach. Uh, the manager is, uh, proposing sixty thousand dollars. I would say that Bond Beach is the one that's in immediate atten- is in need of immediate attention. Uh, the quality of the beach is, uh, degraded to a point where it's, uh, there's some areas where it's just not, you're almost down to original soil. Um, and it, uh, the disadvantage of Bond Beach is the terrain that is behind the beach is very steep. Um, so we'd be looking to implement measures to control the stormwater as it comes off the, uh, the slope. And, uh, essentially prevent, is, prevent the beach from eroding into the lake. Now, the, uh, uh, not only is it the quality of the beach that we're looking to try to, um, um, renovate here, but also, we, we can't just go down and just keep dumping beach, uh, beach sand on the beach year after year. It's just not allowed by, uh, New Hampshire DES any longer. And any, we will be able to replenish that beach if we have those measures in place and designed, uh, to, uh, to stop the erosion from happening or minimize the erosion. So, um, really twofold is to, to improve the beach, but also allow us, uh, let the DES will, uh, improvements will allow us to get, uh, sand to replenish the beach.
Will the, um, manager's recommendation for sixty thousand dollars do it?
I believe so. I haven't got final estimates for the, for the costs, uh, for the, what's been designed, but, uh, I think we can make that work based on what I've seen for, from the design. We're not talking huge infrastructure improvements here. A lot of it's, uh, uh, you know, uh, some, uh, pro- properly placed catch basin, uh, one length of pipe, some stabilization of the, of the soil and the, and the land above the beach. Uh, and, um, and also just some, some erosion control measures, essentially. Um, so I, I think sixteen thousand dollars will, will cover what we need to do.
My intention would be to fund the sixty thousand for one beach this year, then come back next year and do the sixty thousand for next year, for the second beach.
It, it would be just foolish to do the design work and then not do anything with it.
Right, right, right.
Kevin, is, uh, DES, are they in the loop on this? I mean, usually you gotta show them what you're gonna do if you're gonna replenish your beach sand, so...
Yes, yeah.
Are they on board with what, what your plans are?
Yes, I believe wetland permits have been, uh, will be submitted, but there's been some preliminary discussion with our consultant. Uh, it has been working with, uh, DES on this.
All right, so it's on track?
Yes. And we would anticipate if this money became available, the work would be done this fall. So, uh, the next item is the Levitt Park Basketball Court Resurfacing, which can disappear because, uh, if you remember, we were able to pull some funds from, uh, Impact Fees, uh, to make that, uh, make that happen, uh, this year.
That's along with, uh, Tardif and, um...
Tardif and Sandborne, correct.
Gonna be all done?
Yes.
And when is that gonna happen?
Uh, I talked to the contractor a couple of weeks ago, and they said mid-June. So, we're, we're getting there.
Anytime now?
Anytime.
Fantastic.
And the weather looks good, so they aren't having too many rain out days.
I've actually had people ask me if you're gonna do pickleball on the Tardif Park.
Our plan is yes, yeah.
I told them that they were.
Yeah, they're, they are at Levitt.
Pickleball's, pickleball is the thing.
It is, it's, it is.
I never heard of it.
Yes, it is.
The next item is the Centralized Irrigation Control System. This has been an item that's, that's been on the docket here for a couple of years, uh, requesting fifty thousand dollars. And we have twenty-four irrigation systems, plus or minus maybe a couple, uh, throughout the city. And, uh, we're just looking at a way of managing our irrigation systems efficiently and effectively, uh, through, uh, a, a more automated system. And this, this request would help us, uh, install, um, irrigation controls for majority of our systems, so that we don't actually have to go out and program and adjust and troubleshoot systems, uh, in the field. We could do it remotely from a desktop computer. So, if we get a week of rain, uh, we, we do have rain sensors, but they don't always work. If we get a week of rain, we could, we could determine whether we've got irrigation systems that are running when they shouldn't be and vice versa. We can also see if we have irrigation systems that are not working correctly, um, or if we have a zone that's not working for some reason. Uh, it would help us, uh, identify what those problems are, and, and they would all be based on, and basically, this amount would allow, this money would allow us to sw- buy control systems that, uh, we can install and upgrade the existing ones that would talk to a desktop, say, at back at, uh, uh, the Parks and Rec Office.
How, how is that communication? Is it wire or cell?
You could do a cell service, you could do a, uh, eh, cell service would make the, the most, uh, the most sense. Uh, otherwise, you'd have to do, uh, uh, you'd have to do...
A lot of wiring.
Wi- Wi-Fi at certain facilities and, but cellular service would be the, 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 make the most sense.
This, this price that you're quoting us, is that pretty accurate as far as the total cost to do all of these things?
This is a number that was given to us by a, uh, irrigation contractor that, um, that looked at what we had and, uh...
How long ago?
Uh, two years ago, maybe? Any questions on that one? Okay.
So, the, one quick one. The softball field is the only field that's not irrigated right now, correct?
Right, yeah, and I think that's...
Okay, I didn't even...
Yes, that's actually the next one. Good segue, Bob. Memorial Park, uh, softball irrigation is the next item for twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the last, what I would call, major, uh, athletic field that we have that doesn't have automated irrigation. Um, we had, Memorial Park Baseball Field was done, uh, two years ago. Uh, we've had good results with that field, that field's really turned around for us. So, this is just one that, um, it's kind of the last one that we have, um, to get upgraded. The reason for doing it would be, obviously, to, to help the quality of the, the grass and the playing surface and, uh, and that gets used, the, virtually every night by adult softball. Uh, and then also, there's other, uh, other uses too of that field, uh, in other times of the year.
Is that the high school baseball team, or are they playing at Robbie Mills these days, or...
A high scho- yes, the high school baseball plays at Robbie Mills, the middle school baseball team plays at Memorial Baseball. The next item is the Opechii Beach Drainage Design. Uh, and this would be the continuation of the, uh, beach improvements that we're looking at to, uh, address of, uh, erosion at all of our in-town beaches. Uh, and this would be, uh, twenty thousand dollars for drainage design for Opechii Cove, twenty thousand dollars for improvements at Opechii Point. Um, and that's, um, in the amount of forty thousand dollars, twenty thousand each beach. Next item is the Gale Avenue Waterfront Improvements. Uh, I don't know how many of you are aware, but at the end of Gale Avenue, the, essentially, the right-of-way of Gale Avenue extends all the way to Lake Wenasquam. And there's been a historic, uh, use of that property for a public wharf dating back to, I think, the early nineteen hundreds even. And, uh, up until a couple of years ago, there was a, uh, a war, a, a dock system that was there. Uh, this is becoming disrepair, it was unsafe, uh, we, we've, uh, removed it. And where we want to be, that, that's a rel- it's relatively popular site for that, that neighborhood and others. And we, we, um, we ha- also have some erosion problems there with, with runoff, uh, coming down the street. And not all of it gets caught by the catch basins and, uh, the velocity of the water has caused some, has caused some scouring and erosion along the shoreline. And we'd like to look at trying to improve that, not only do drainage improvements, but putting in a, a dock system that could accommodate kayaks and canoes. Uh, we feel like that's a better use than, um, than just a plain dock system for boats, because certainly, neighborhood people could use the dock for, for visitors and that type of thing. But most people have docks, uh, that would have that kinda use. And people aren't gonna park there and go to a restaurant, it's just too far to go. So, uh, you know, one of the ideas that's been brought up is to utilize it for canoes and kayaks. Uh, there's parking for maybe five or six cars. Um, and those systems are just allow you to not necessarily enter the water, it's just, it makes it easy to, to, to launch a canoe and kayak off a system with a dock that kinda slants and rolls in gently. And, uh, and we don't wanna promote that as a swimming, uh, uh, location, uh, that's, it's never been intended for that, um, and, uh...
Used for that, though.
It, it does, it does.
By the mayor, among others.
Yeah, see, that's okay. And, uh, and then, and, and it's a nice spot, but we certainly wanna take...
All the time.
I can tell you where all the high spots are offshore and...
I got about thirty lures down at the bottom there somewhere, the tree that it didn't like.
Oh, we gotta exchange notes someday.
But it's certainly an amenity, uh, that, you know, it, it gets wa- you know, improved waterfront access for anybody. But it's, it's, it's kind of a nice location, we feel like that kinda uses more...
Pretty common kayak launch, too.
Right, right. So, that's, um, that's that item. The last item I have is, uh, a request for Skate Park Elements. Uh, the skate park, eh, eh, as of today, you know, eh, eh, is, eh, many of you may not be aware, we've had to basically close and lock the facility. We have one element still in there, the half-pipe, that is, is, is too far in disrepair for us to, to be able to bring it back to life. Uh, the, the wood frame is just rotted beyond repair. And, um, so this is a, what we're looking to do is get some, some funding for some, uh, skate park elements that are designed, uh, the pre-cast concrete structures, uh, things that are, are, are built by companies that build these things that are durable, that are low maintenance. Um, the wooden structures that, although they served a great purpose, uh, the wooden structures that are in there just take a beading, they don't hold up well, uh, they don't weather well through the year. Uh, and it's really been a maintenance headache for us to, uh, to try to keep those, those elements, uh, repaired and in place, so...
How long has that skate park been there?
Ten years, maybe?
Yeah, it's longer than that. Well, the, the police station, I think it was shortly after the police station was built.
It was two thousand three, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So, a, a question I have along that line is, uh, to ask if you have any, if you go back fifteen years, uh, or maybe longer, there was certainly a, uh, uh, it was the thing to do to build skate parks. And, and even some of the smaller communities around Laconia built much more elaborate facilities...
Right.
Than we have, Meredith, Belmont. And I've wondered what the, uh, what the staying power of that has been, if you have any feel for that.
Well, I, and I've researched that a little bit to see, mainly looking at grant opportunities. My research has indicated that skateboarding's on a downward trend. Uh, it's at a low point in the cycle, not to say that it won't, you know, I think it's like anything, tennis does the same thing, it comes up and down, depends on, you know, just the way things, you know, what, the way things are going as far as, uh, uh, the culture or whatever. But, um, uh, I think we're on a downturn. We've, although we've had, uh, individuals come to us that wanna d- help out, um, but there's really, and I've encouraged them to formu- you know, and formulate a group of people, um, to have, uh, you know, to talk about, you know, and begin, eh, start an initiative to, to help perhaps partner with the city at some point. But I think, uh, you know, I don't think it's a large percentage of the population that we're seeing that, that, uh, that is demanding, uh, that facility be, be, uh, invested in at this point. So, I, uh, my recommendation would be a couple of thi- a couple of options. One is to encourage, uh, public-private partnership with a group that had, starts an initiative, uh, whatever it's called, Friends of Laconia Skate Park or whatever. Uh, or to even look at a regional approach to a skate park, because other communities have struggled in this area with keeping their skate parks open and funded. And perhaps a regional approach might be a way that we could get a, number one, a better skate park in the Lakes Region, but also ease the burden of each community if they have, uh, you know, their initial investment, but also the maintenance. Uh, and, uh, and I think kids would travel to it if they, uh, if, you know, you, you'd love to have a, a facility that kids could walk to that don't have the availability. But I think if you have a nice facility, kids are gonna find their way there. Um, I think Nash would just put in a six hundred thousand dollar skate park, and I've talked to kids that will drive down from here to go down there. If it's a good skate park, they're gonna go. Uh, it doesn't mean we need a six hundred thousand dollar skate park, but, uh, I think the community, uh, I think the, uh, if the communities perhaps could get together, um, certainly want that, something I'd be willing to reach out to other communities to see if there's any interest in maybe a regional skate park that could be a cooperative or...
Yeah, I would encourage you to think, explore that more, because I think, you know, for my uneducated two cents worth, ours is a pretty modest park by skate park standards.
Right.
And, you know, I'm just not, I wouldn't be convinced easily that it would be to anyone's great benefit or a very small number of people's to simply replace what we have with better equipment or whatnot.
Right.
And that, uh, something grander of a regional basis would probably be better.
I think so, I think might be a good approach. So, I think, uh, oh, I have three more items, I'm trying to be quick here, I didn't intend to go so long.
Got, uh, twelve minutes.
I'll be quick. Uh, the next three items are under the Facilities Component, and this is, uh, falls under my realm, uh, from being the Facility Director, but they're, all three items are, uh, Laconia Police Station, uh, requests for the building. First one is, uh, uh, a request for Evidence Room and Armory Ventilation. The current Evidence Room, which is where they store anything that they collect for, that they need to hang on to, whether it be weapons, uh, drugs, uh, you name it. There's currently no ventilation system in that room. And that, and in, in addition...
Didn't we talk about these last week?
I did, they were on the list, and we've, uh, we've recommended, since I presented the budget, to do a couple of them out of the contingency where we, um, put the money from the sale of Lakeport Fire Station. And then to use some of the Police Department Impact Fees to fund the, um, the Evidence Drying Station. So, I think those three, if you accept those recommendations on that sheet that we went over last week and then I gave you in, uh, in April as well, that those are covered there if you choose to do so.
So, it sounds like you've heard the, heard these requests?
Yeah.
So, okay, so I won't, so there's, there's no need to repeat, okay?
And they're gonna be funded if we accept the manager's recommendation?
If you accept those, we'll move some out of contingency, which would come to you at the June twenty-fifth meeting, because we need to transfer that money into different line items before the fiscal year ends. And then the fourteen, uh, sorry, the eleven thousand dollars for the Evidence Drying Station, again, is there and Impact Fees are available to you at any time.
Okay, so I'll, I'll save, uh, save going through those. So, that's, that's all I have for tonight, but certainly, if there's any questions about anything...
Any wrap-up questions for Kevin while we have him here? No? Okay, thank you, we appreciate your coming very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
So, if there's no other business to come before this meeting, I'm gonna declare it adjourned at six fifty PM, and, uh, we'll reconvene in ten minutes.